So, and I, I really prefer to have a table in front of me when I sit.
Come on, so I can.
I mean, I think you did that.
I broke it, said, "Come here."
One day I'll tell you.
So I need to do it. I, um.
Do I hold up for that?
You do.
What do you have?
Is this not free from there?
I, um, I don't have like such a great experience with. No, I can't begin. Um, I have.
Good. So I got everything set up for you right this time.
Thank you. No more problems. I appreciate you.
Quickly came in and took care of it. And I couldn't find you after, but I figured you'd notice it was done.
No, I came in and I helped to put out some of the tables.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, you see the name. Okay. Where do you go to do myself? You can't cover tables. So it's like really thoughtful where it goes.
Right.
Like if you had a mirror and I'm looking at you, like, I don't know. I see how the tape and on the back. You'll, you'll get there. Nice.
Five oh six. And we start in the pledge of the legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't know what you mean.
It's not secret.
She went to a crowd and expected to report.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so, um, public hearings. Are any public hearings? No, not seeing any. Okay. Um, so the old business, the reason we're here today, um, has to discuss the fiscal year 23 budget. That's the budget we're in currently. And, um, also the fiscal year 24, which will be next year's budget. And Caitlin here, so, oh, perfect timing. We, I just said we're here for, to discuss the budget. And do you have things for us or are you just holding on for you?
Sorry?
Do you do things you're giving us or no?
Yes, I'm just waiting to see.
Okay. All right. So, um, I just want to get, make sure Caitlin has it, so I got. What we need to do is make sure that we are, uh, really get a status of where we're at. So we know whether we need to, um, request a special warrant, a warrant on the special town meeting, um, for more funds or not. So that's kind of where we're at right now.
So right now, you've taken everything that we anticipate, that we can, that we can encumber into, um, the system. I've listed all the things that we can't encumber, but we anticipate. And with that, and the original 150,000 from the town, we should, I think, be okay. But as a backup, um, I received confirmation from the state that we can use the circuit breaker funds that were, that we received due to Irving secondary students. And we can use those funds, which is about $84,000, if we do still go over.
And is that, um, circuit breaker different than the circuit breaker amount we have in the fiscal 24 budget of 65?
Yes.
So it's a completely different pot of money?
Yep. So the money that we should be receiving this year, like at the end of this year? Because I know we just received a payment of $30,000. We just, I just posted that last week. Yes, we, in our system, it shows that we paid $84,000. Um, that has been there coming into this year. We haven't needed to use it for Irving secondary, which was, um, the purpose behind it because these students, um, have, uh, reached over the threshold. But we can use that for Irving elementary's budget.
So just, just so I'm clear, I'm going to ask it again. So it's not counting the 30,000 we just received?
No.
Okay.
Uh, well, you just received for? Uh, it said, uh, circuit breaker, um, extra adjustment.
Extraordinary relief?
Yes, yep. Yeah, those are separate, yeah.
So, say that again, so what?
Those are, those are, there's extraordinary.
Two different things.
There's circuit breaker and they're, they're different.
Two different things, okay.
So that's it.
Okay. Thanks, Caitlin.
You're welcome.
And for our secondary, it looks like we still have, um, what was it, $300,000? Yeah, we have received a fourth quarter tuition. Um, it's always four in line of you, but we, unless something happens, we should kind of come close to but not go over budget for Irving secondary.
Is that the only bill that we're waiting for or are you just getting any out of secondary?
I don't think so. I think there's some things, if there's a stipend for some of the third quarter stuff, but nothing that would, um, put us over at that point.
Okay, so looking like we have an additional $100,000 there then?
I, we need to check it over carefully. I think you might be a little closer. But I'll check.
If this one you sent over today has 387,000, and if it's 250, we definitely have additional there.
I think all of the transportation's been received, um, but not necessarily special education transportation. We still have some to deal with.
Well, we have, well, we have used the whole line of the transportation, uh, special education budget line. So you, you, so it's still, okay.
So we have $150,000 additional in secondary as of now with just the, the go, the money, tuition.
Well, we don't want to use tuition and also some, um, special education, we'll just have to.
But not be totaling over 130,000 though, yeah?
Yeah, I'm just looking it over really quickly. So I, I had kind of, I had taken the, the May 31st, um, budget and can you just speak to how it was that we had, you know, a couple of weeks ago, such a deficit? And, and now we seem to be actually in the black by quite a bit?
I'm just saying, we're in Latvia, 150,000 that we were receiving from special town meeting. It's all forced into a central court, so you can see it in there now. So 100,000 special education, um, tuition and 50,000 in transportation.
But that had been allocated to us. We knew that that was there before our last meeting, which was a couple of weeks ago. And a couple of weeks ago, it still seemed like we had quite a huge gap. And so can you just talk to us about what happened in those couple of weeks that you were?
So the 150 that we were already receiving, then the amount that I appear to be over up to was initial 150, um, because of the transition transportation. But we've done everything, school's done a special job with reducing spending last couple of months. And so when you compare it to last year, there's these and these expenditures that we had. And we're able to, Pat and Eric, so we didn't, to, to, to even cover anything that they feel like they have to spend for the rest of the year instead of what would, um, normally accompany it, would start to spend. So we're doing a great job, really trying to do a lot of that now.
So between now and two weeks ago, we've really looked at the anticipated expenses and encumbered as much as possible to get a clearer, more accurate picture.
Okay.
Yeah, is the process, don't you have like a, like a bank account map? Like, like you know how much you have in this line item and you wouldn't overspend it? And, and do, do you get permission? Don't, doesn't, sorry. Don't departments get approval ahead of time before they make a purchase so that you don't overspend that line?
It depends on line. Um, for, for some, yes, but for the tuition and transportation, those are approved automatically, which is majority of our, our, our over budget items. And special education contracts services has not been able to continue to roll that kind of the part.
Right, but the contract, but the, but the transportation and the special education costs, we've, we've now known for several months, so that hasn't changed. And so I guess what I'm still trying to understand is we had put a budget freeze into effect in February, I want to say, practically if I'm wrong, anybody here up here. And we knew about the transportation and the special education costs. And so, but yet two weeks ago, we were somewhere between 150 and 450,500. There's a huge range of a gap.
It was up to 100.
Okay, well, there was, there was all sorts of numbers, doesn't, whatever. The point is, in two weeks, you were able to close that gap. And so I'm trying to understand, we didn't just, we, we didn't decide to not buy things. We, what happened in those two weeks that we suddenly got from having a deficit to not having a deficit? And therefore, what would we, what's the takeaway for next year? I mean, we can't, we can't keep doing this where we all of a sudden panic because we think we have, we have a huge deficit. But when you look a little closer, actually, we don't. We, we need to make sure what's in place is to look a little closer first and have a clear understanding and an idea of what's to come so that we are not faced with this idea that we have any amount over.
So I think a week ago or what was, um, what was our last meeting? Our last meeting, before the projections created was enough of an alarm to bring you to your attention and to talk about it. And since that, we have some time to be able to really look at all the pieces and figure out what's the minimum we can spend from now to the end of the year and cover that, get a better picture of it. So we were at potentially up to $150,000 deficit. Now we are over and we're within the limits that we're given. Down to a map that we will have to ask the town for money because we've got clarity on the use of, of circuit breaker.
So you're feeling like we are going to have to use that circuit breaker money or we're not?
I'm not sure yet.
But it is there for us if we need to.
Uh, we don't have to ask the town for more money.
No, we don't.
We do not have to.
Okay. And, and that's, that's all great, but I'm, I'm now trying to think ahead to the 24 fiscal year. And what have, what changes have to be put into place to ensure that we do not have a repeat of this year? Where all of a sudden, you're, you know, you're kind of telling us that we could potentially be $150,000 in the hole. And we, we cannot function that way. So what is going to be different? What changes are going to be made so that we don't end up back here kind of doing the same thing again?
So I think Caitlin has looked at it more carefully, line by line, and will continue to do that, knowing that there might be some fluctuations in some unanticipated expenses.
How are you tracking these expenditures? Like, are you keeping a running tally? Like, again, going back to those line items, we should be able to control them by knowing what we're purchasing and knowing what we've already purchased. I know because Deb sends out our reports every month for the, you know, for all town departments and you can see what's in each, each bucket of money. So you know how much you have to spend. Or, because that's why I'm just getting, I'm just not understanding how we can spend, overspend our budget if we have these totals that we're supposed to be working within. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, we track it, ensure lines and count details constantly. And let's say we can't hire this, you see, the A to come and consult for a minute and go over in that line? We're just not capable of doing it. So we are going to have to overspend some of the accounts.
Well, the good news is we don't have to go back to the town.
Yes. I will say, I do have to ask. When I talked to the state about the two different budgets for Irving secondary and Irving elementary, that part of the conversation was very confusing for Dussie because they didn't understand why we have two separate budgets. Does anyone know why we have two separate?
It's the way it's always been, I guess. As long as I've been on, we have two separate budgets. We have no control over the tech school or the secondary budget.
Well, the tech school's in assessment, right?
Yeah.
Ours is a tuition agreement with Gilmore U. So that's slightly different.
Yeah, and we do, with this, we have unpredictability with it either way, whether it's in its own budget, whether they're combined together. But it would give some more, I think it would be a little more clear of when we can and can't use different grants and different funding if it's or not two separate budgets.
I mean, yes, but it's kind of, it's kind of just our great luck that we happen to have the circuit breaker money that we happen to be able to use to fix this budget. And I, so again, I keep going back to, we can't always assume that we're going to have some great luck on our side. We have to put into place a budget that is going to accurately reflect what our needs are and then stay within those needs.
In every other year, I think it's a lot easier. This year had over $300,000 of unexpected.
And some needs, for example, if in the middle of the year, a child requires some, something, we have to provide it. And so we can't always anticipate those needs. And we try, if we overspend in one line, for example, we under spend it.
Well, I think that's what those funds are for. They're for the added district placement. The circuit breaker funds are reimbursement for those funds. So it does make sense to appropriate that for those expenditures.
For any, they can be used for any special education expenditure.
So here's what I would like to, like to say. So going forward, just again, so you know what the expectation is going forward, um, is that we have a budget at every meeting with a driver page. Where are we? Are we over in the, you know, are we getting close to being over? Are we way under? Where are we in this, in, in this budget at this, at this point in the, in the year? So that we can be tracking it and seeing that we are, um, where we should be based on the number of months, you know, we still have left in the school year. Um, and then, um, uh, yeah, so, so at every meeting, we have that so that we can be discussing that. And then I also would like to, um, make a, a proposal that we create and draft some language that if you're saying something happens at some point in the year that was not anticipated in the budget, so whatever it is, you need to hire another teacher, you need to, whatever, buy a new chapter, whatever the problem is that is going to be, um, that isn't reflected in our budget area. We haven't budgeted for it. That that come before the school committee for a discussion, before it is put in place so that we are aware of it when it, when it, before it happens ideally. Um, and we can call a meeting within 48 hours. So if you find out on a Monday that a child needs X, Y, and Z, and it's going to cost a ma, a bunch of money, 48 hours later, we can have a school committee meeting so that we are, um, aware of it right away. And we can start thinking about it and putting it on our radar as far as a budget, budgeting issue. Um, this is, I, I mean, I've never had a budgeting here like this. And I've been both a staff member and a school committee member for a lot of years. So I want to make sure that we don't end up here again. Um, and I want to make sure we're putting as many safeguards in place as possible to prevent something like this from happening again.
I will say, so the expenditure report is the budget and what we have spent for the, the range and the year to date and what's encumbered. And this can be used as a tool. I know for other school committees, um, I've been, you know, at their request, I go over each of the ones that's over and we do it. I'm certainly happy to do that for their meetings as well.
Yep, definitely. And that will just be a constant on our, on our, um, agenda.
Sure.
Um, and then the other, yell out because I can't, we see you down there. So somebody wants to say something. Um, the other thing I've been wondering about is, um, the transportation cost. We talked about it a lot and you, you reference it as one of the reasons our budget did get so out of whack. Um, we had talked, uh, quite a bit about, um, purchasing our own vehicle and providing our own transportation. Where are we with that?
I think Karina, our Director of Student Support Services, has contacted Brian and is waiting to hear further about where to go from there.
Yep. With the purchasing of the vehicles, the town was looking at, at what that would cost for and what the procurement would look like. Um, Jen, you can speak to that, you were at that meeting. Um, as far as the special ed transportation, if we continue to contract out, Karina's reached out to many different vendors and we have two quotes.
Right, but we were responsible, and by we, I mean you, we're responsible for coming up with a, um, a job, a job description for a driver and, um, trying to figure out what unit they would be, um, associated with. Have you done that yet?
It's not done. We haven't heard about the van being procured.
Well, regardless of whether the van is procured or not, you can still come up with a job description and what unit they would be in. We don't have to have the car in the driveway to know these things.
It's not done.
Yeah, it could be worked on at the end.
So, so that would be great to have by our June 20th meeting so that we can, we can discuss that. That is where, you know, a lot of our cost savings was talked about, so I want to make sure that that's still moving forward. And I know that the, um, town has supported the idea of getting, of, of purchasing a vehicle. So I don't really think there's concern there. I think the work needs to be done on this end. Personnel, job description, that sort of thing.
Um, line, well, I guess there's not really a more number. But the textbooks and instructional materials for this year still has, oh, let me make sure my eyes are... Like, over twelve thousand. And I know there's a lot of talk about looking at E L A curriculums and making a purchase around that. Was the intent to have that purchased through this budget? And is that still able to happen with the movement of money that you have to do to make sure we're not over? Or is that getting like a buck until next year?
Yep, the cost of the reading curriculum is over the twelve thousand. It's sixteen thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars and two cents.
Okay.
So, so some proposals, um, we've been talking about this since February, when there were different budgetary issues. And so we hadn't decided to take it from the textbook line. One of the other ideas was to use, um, rural aid. But what I'd like to do is see where the budget lands by the end of the year and then for that purchase it over.
So has one bed decided on, I'm just curious?
Uh, Har, Houghton, Mifflin, Hartford.
Okay, perfect. I knew there was down to two, but I hadn't heard anything after that. So the goal is still to move forward and find the money to purchase that, to start the implementation in the fall?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Can you repeat that number again, please?
Sixteen thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars and two cents.
Sixteen, right now, sixteen?
Sixteen.
Okay.
And that's K for six, right?
And so if you're purchasing it over the summer, then you would be using fiscal twenty-four budget?
Or rural aid.
Or rural aid, okay. And so that line that still has twelve thousand, you're going to reallocate to, to make sure that we're not over budget? Is that what I'm understanding then?
Well, it all kind of gets allocated to that final number. Whether we run over or under, it's the, the final budget balance number, the grand total.
Yeah, so that's, that's part of that.
Before we make a purchase, we want to make sure we have the funding. And if we have to use the funding elsewhere, we will look elsewhere for the funding. And one of the options was rural aid.
And is that a revolving account?
It's not a grant, I believe it's, it's a revolving.
It's revolving.
It is, okay.
Any other specific questions you wanted to ask? Down in there, are you good?
Um, no, I mean, I, I know that our power went up quite a bit, but from one expenditure to the next, it was like an eleven thousand dollar difference.
It could just be the timing of when we receive the bills when they're paid.
Have a question?
Yeah, sorry.
Give a big wave because I may not have seen you, sorry.
It's literally the question, I came in late because I got ordered five. Could we revisit open forum before the end of the meeting? That was, that was all.
If, I'm sorry, what?
Could we revisit open forum before the end of the meeting?
Oh, yes, 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 okay. Go ahead, yeah.
So just a question around, um, kind of budgeting and encumbrance. And so the, I guess it's kind of unanticipated in how we encumber, and I'm a little confused or just trying to follow. Some of the communications, there was a note that we can't encumber Union Twenty-Eight costs, and that didn't make sense to me. And then also, you know, I'm not clear on how we have unanticipated or unknown expenses. And we're asking vendors, wouldn't we have, wouldn't we know what we've asked, you know, procured for services? Or if it's an assessment, wouldn't we know what we have been being assessed quarterly or monthly and be able to anticipate approximately? I guess I'm, I'm just, the unanticipated or unknown sounds like it's a, it's a large number. If it's not, well, it's less concerning, but I'm, I'm just not, I, just not clear from my experience on how, you know, the town side, we budget everything else, how we have unanticipated costs that may exceed a budget. Because we can't outspend the budget without authorization from the voters or funds from somewhere else. So it's just not clear to me.
So we have a lot of unanticipated expenses, like the air conditioning just went, and it's ninety degrees today. And we had, what's the acronym, the one for the, um, security?
J A M F.
J A M F. We have, um, we didn't anticipate receiving that bill. So there, there are things that we receive that we may not know how much it's going to be, whether it's contracted services for, um, or for maintenance, for special ed, or for networking to telecommunications. So it's, it's not as easy as knowing, we get, we have to pay this bill every month and it's the same amount, and this bill every month and it's the same amount. There are unknowns to the budget.
I, I mean, I understand emergency stuff, but that's, there's different ways to look at that and handle that. But that should be the exception. I would, I would hope we don't have that many emergencies, so.
I would love to not have any emergency.
Wouldn't we all? Uh, but I guess, yeah, I just, I know the, the cost can vary, but I would think we could estimate enough to, and I'm, I'm hoping that's why we think we're going to be okay. But I, I'm just, it, it seems like, you know, we have three hundred something thousand left according to this, um, budget with a hundred and fifty from the special town meeting included. And it sounds like we still think we need eighty-five more for thirty days.
We have the eighty-five if we need it. We might have some expenses that we can't anticipate or we don't know the exact amount of it. So I know it seems like a lot, um, it is a big budget, and we do receive invoices after June first or June thirtieth.
Yeah, of course, but all that has to be encumbered, so it would, you know, we anticipate, we know what those expenses are before June thirty.
Most of them.
If you don't know them, you can't encumber them. If you didn't encumber them, you can't pay them without a special town meeting authorization.
Well, no, I'm saying that a lot of them are encumbered, but there's also, we have a whole list of expenses that we can't encumber because we don't know the amount yet. And so, we don't know, the air conditioner has to get, has to get fixed, and so we're having someone else come in to look at it. And we don't know if it's going to be a big job or if it's going to just be something minor. There's just, there are amounts we just can't know right now.
Okay. I guess I'm still a little confused. We have more than ten percent of the budget left, and we don't think that that's enough for one twelfth left to go of the fiscal year. It's concerning that we haven't encumbered most of that if we think we need it in the next thirty days. Because we should be able to encumber a majority of it, wouldn't we? I, I mean, maybe I'm wrong in how we encumber and how we know what our expenses are, but wouldn't we know what our expenses should be for the next thirty days? Approximately enough in the different line items to encumber it or encumber an anticipated amount?
And we have talked about anticipated amounts and encumbered amounts. But for example, if we had someone out on an unexpected, um, our school psychologist, for example, is out on a maternity leave. We didn't, when we set the budget for this year, anticipate that we would have to contract for psychological evaluations. That's one example of something that's unanticipated. We have a rough cost, and we've talked about that, but we haven't gotten all of those invoices because tests, and we can't always anticipate what students may need psychological testing. And so that's some of those things that it sounds like you're wondering about. That would be an example.
But at this point, you, you should, you, you know she was pregnant for the last... X number of months.
We didn't know a parent was going to request an assessment, but they're trying.
Until today?
Well, this, this month, maybe, yes. If a parent just sent them in.
Okay, so an assessment, I understand, but not a... There shouldn't be that many assessments that come up.
I'm just telling you that we have contracted with Levine and Associates. We've paid some bills. We are anticipating more coming.
But you know how much it costs to do a psychological assessment.
It depends on how long the evaluation takes and how many tests.
And who that evaluator is, what are their certifications? Is the one that's available through this association has more qualifications, so they're charging more for the hour? And then this one, we were able to snag from here and that, like, it's, I, my question, I'm wondering, is it sounds like, I think it's harder, these are like human beings that we're making a budget for, and so lots of changes happen and things come up throughout the year, along with grounds and building. And I think when other departments are budgeting their, they're making their budgets, it's like, they, it's not the same. I don't know. But it sounds like we have a plan to make sure every month that you're going to see the accounts and the budget and where it's at. And I, I really think that that might clear up some miscommunication.
Yep, I think that's, that's our hope. Um, but I do think that these questions are worth having answers to, and not to split hairs, but all the departments have people. And so all of them are, are, are working with both materials and people. And so they're, you know, they're, they're facing the very same things that, that we're supposed to be facing. May, may not be on quite the same scale, but nonetheless, that they're, they're doing it too. So I wouldn't say that it's not quite the same. I think it's more similar. Yeah, did you have a follow-up? Yeah?
Yeah, just, so I follow everything you're saying, but I guess, are you, maybe to make this question simpler, do we have unanticipated, unexpected, that that could cost three hundred thousand dollars in the next thirty days? Because if we have anticipated, wouldn't we have it encumbered? And therefore, that wouldn't be three hundred thousand dollars. I guess that's my confusion. If we've encumbered everything we know of and anticipate, there's thirty days to go.
We can't anticipate things like substitute costs. We can anticipate how much we're going to, what the bill from, say, Levine is going to come in. We can't anticipate if we have a need for, um, for our special education legal counsel to come in. There are things that we can anticipate.
Sure, my, my question is, or my, I guess what I'm trying to clarify is, are you saying that you have three hundred, you are anticipating the potential for three hundred and twelve thousand dollars of things that you may not know what'll happen in the next thirty days?
I think we will be under that amount. I feel comfortable. And if, if we did have something come up that required us to go over, we have a backup plan for that as well.
Again, I will ask the question to the superintendent. Do we, are we saying that we, as a school, have three hundred and twelve thousand dollars that we have no bills for, but we anticipate, and that's our contingency for things that may occur that we're not aware of yet?
Well, I believe that's what Caitlin just shared, that we went, she and I spent most of the day, um, or some of the most of the day, going over what is encumbered and what is estimated and anticipated.
And the updated expenditure report has us at two hundred and seventy-five thousand, roughly, with the new encumbrances. Is that, I mean, Pat and Eric have been really working very hard and by accounts payable, trying to look up every single vendor we might anticipate, reaching out to them, looking at past bills, and trying to encumber as much as we can.
So there's an even newer one because our most recent one has three hundred and twelve thousand.
The one I just gave you?
Oh, the one you just handed us. I was going off the one that you had in the email.
Yeah, we've been, everyone's been working really hard.
That's what she was stapling. It's two seventy-four, nine, one, eight, eighty.
Okay, well, thank you. And I guess, i- if that's the answer, then unless there's unexpected things, there should be a surplus of two seventy-five on June thirty.
Uh, the two seventy-five doesn't take into account the Union Twenty-Eight because those are not, those are paid out of a fringe. And so it's not, we can't encumber them the same way, which is about thirty thousand of it.
I guess I still, like, don't need the answer tonight, but I don't understand why we can't encumber anything that we know of of an anticipated or known expense. But I, I don't need that answer, so I'm asking to understand it now, but it doesn't, I was unaware that there's any limitations to encumber as long as we know of.
As long as we know.
The liability. Thank you.
So then the higher, the spending freeze has to stay in place in order for us to make these numbers work. We can't all of a sudden be buying a bunch of things.
Well, we do have some upcoming additional expenses. Um, we ran out of cleaner, so that was two seventy-five. I, I met with Pat today. Um, we got an invoice for a fire extinguisher that needed maintenance. That was forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. I believe there was emails between the town and our technology coordinator relative to content filtering and network threat protection and cybersecurity through J A M F. That's two thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars. So there are some, as of today, upcoming expenses.
Yeah, and that's what we're, we're hoping that we have, we're going to have these ones that we didn't see coming, and that's going to build, break, this number will go down. But I feel confident that we will not go over budget with the amount that we have. And if we do, if we have an emergency or if we have something that causes it to, we do have confirmation that we can use the circuit breaker money.
Okay, I didn't mean, I, so let me clarify. I'm not talking about those things, but obviously, things have to be fixed.
No, I just wanted to share that with the committee.
I'm talking about, we're not buying more paper. We're not buying, um, you know, a new projector screen. We're not buying new rest mats. We're not buying any of those things because that would not allow our budget to, you know, to stay where we need to.
We do have some field trips that are coming up as well, unless the committee is going to tell the, the staff that they are not wanting that money to be spent.
We don't plan on spending it down because we think we have it, if that's what you're asking. It's not going to be a, uh, end of the year, oh, we have some money left, let's, let's buy some things now while we have it. It's, that's not our plan at all.
It's the things we need for the school to fund.
And the town's been generous to, to give us the hundred and fifty, and it was not our intention on abusing that.
Okay.
How close do you think we'll be with the budget for our next meeting? I know that's probably like a crazy question, but like, you know, is, will it be more towards like, oh, fifty thousand? Because we've got a lot of this, and we only have ten days left in the month. And like, I, I just don't know how quick you get information or will have that. Like, how much do you anticipate this to change as we get closer and like, when we get our next one in a couple of weeks?
So I have put a June first, um, deadline for all anticipated purchases. So now that we've kind of hit that deadline and we'll start to get invoices and things will be unencumbered, and it should look clear even a couple of weeks.
Uh, any monies that are left over? I know we're talking that we might go over, but if we don't and we come close to the line and say there's fifty thousand left over, what happens to that fifty thousand as I go back to the town?
Only regional schools can hold some money from year to year in the excess and deficiencies account. Municipalities, school departments and municipalities return that money to the town.
Except if it's in what's called a revolving account, that means it can keep on, like, revolving, keep on going.
Is the budget published anywhere or being public, can you see it or get access to it?
Um, the budget, like, at the beginning of the one that's voted on a town meeting or like the expenditure reports?
The expenditure reports, as you go along, because what I would love to see in businesses I've worked for in the past is you have your annual budget, what you're planning for the year, your monthly spend, your overall spend year to date. You can kind of gauge where you are.
And, yep, and that's all in the expenditure report. That's what we call, like, that's the title of it. It goes out as meeting materials, uh, to the school committee every month. Um, but I don't know if it's posted to the public or not.
I'm not sure.
Could it be?
We can talk to our technology coordinator.
Thank you.
It is, it is public record.
Public record, so.
Yep.
But I would just want to let Tom know I'm asking.
We can certainly have them here for the meetings, at, at the very least. We can have some paper copies at the meeting, um, for people. I know it must be terribly difficult to be sitting in the audience while we're talking about things you can't see.
When you come in, so you just check line items and you say, oh, why is this all hay over? So it's under, what's, what's going on?
Mm-hmm, yep. Mm-hmm. Yep.
We might have less questions and we can see it too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just, just a, kind of to, to understand and follow along. You, you mentioned, for example, the endpoint detection response and in-content requirements from the insurance company from JAMP, it was 2,000 and some odd dollars. Is that currently encumbered in the data that we have or that the school committee has?
I think that was, that has been new enough. When did we, I'm not sure that the purchase requisition was.
I'm not sure when the purchase rec came. I talked to Pat and Tom about it yesterday.
Okay. I guess.
So these were, that was part of the upcoming and additional expenses as of today when I talked to Pat and got the list. She put the list together for me today and we had a conversation yesterday.
So she may not have encumbered that yet.
And I appreciate that it sounds like a lot of what is being asked now because where we are and where we've been is not maybe been practiced. So, you know, I know you're doing a lot of work to get more current on some of it. My confusion there is that I've seen that quote two or three months ago when we submitted our proposal to the insurance company on what our solution was. So I don't know why we couldn't have encumbered it and already know what that amount is. And this goes back to my question about.
I'm just seeing it right, I saw it yesterday. So I can't speak to any of that.
No, I understand, but this, this is the example of what I'm talking about of these are anticipated and known. Are those not figured into how we're seeing this?
And Pat may have put a requisition in. I just can't answer that until I ask her. So to my knowledge, I saw it yesterday.
So following that, we're only encumbering if we have a purchase rec?
Yeah, that's when the system encumbers is when you put in a purchase requisition and PO is created. You can make an open PO. So some schools choose to do like a open PO for their entire fuel line. So that way, every time we get an invoice, it gets paid at that PO, that PO stays open, but it encumbers the entire fuel line so that we don't even look at the end budget thinking that we're going to not use any fuel.
But certainly things like salaries are encumbered once we know who's grant funded, who's general budget funded, et cetera. I'm not sure, but you said two months ago with the JAMP that may have had a purchase rec. Until I talk to someone else, I can't give you a solid answer.
Sure, sure. Just trying to understand the encumbrance.
Yeah.
To understand how, that you, well, I think we're down to about 225 now. Uh, you know, or to whatever, 100,000 left right now and how that gets us to June 30 and what is taken out of that number already and what isn't. So, thank you.
So by the next school committee meeting, could you please have a printed out list of things that have come in since today, since, since, you know, we're, we're talking about it today? Anything between now and then?
The range to date of the expenditure report to be from here to then. So you can have the amounts and I'll try to do a breakdown of what those, what went into those lines.
Yeah, cause it sounds like Pat, you said created a list of things and you.
Oh, for me to share with you that were upcoming expenses. I don't know if that's part of her regular practice, but I ask for my own knowledge to share with the committee.
So I'm going to ask you to ask her to do that again for us between now and our next school committee meeting.
So Caitlin and I.
I can see it as a list. I'm a visual person. I need to have it in front of me.
Is there anything else that we're questioning, wondering? Anybody else?
All right. So we'll move on. FY '20. Uh, we don't have to do that. That would be all. FY '24 budget. I think there were some questions now that that's passed a town meeting. So we know what the numbers are, but I think there was still some kind of wonderings about it. One of the things that I had asked about in the, in the email was, um, we heard a lot about, well, a lot from the town people about different positions and different. Um, and I'm not asking about people, I'm asking about positions. Um, and so I would like an update as to where we're at with that.
So we are sending out reasonable assurance letters, which tells all the staff, at Unit A and Unit B, that they will be coming back, the staff that are coming back. We have, Lizzie and I are working on preliminary assignments for staff. Um, and that should be out in the next week or so.
And so, um, we talked about there were, I know there was a cut to the, um, technology. I don't know what the title technically is.
Those positions that were restored got their recall letters. So for example, um, even though we always had a preschool, one of the teachers received a recall letter. The tech coordinator was reduced. He received a sort of recall letter restoring his position to that. So positions were restored if they were reduced to their previous FTE.
Okay. And the plan is still to go forward with one preschool classroom next year?
Correct. Um, looking at the needs in the building and then getting recommendations and feedback. We are looking to have, and we have the personnel to have two second grade classrooms looking at the, both the academic and social emotional needs in second grade.
Okay. So you anticipate having two second grade classrooms and.
I do anticipate that, yes.
And then one preschool classroom and then are there any other changes in any of the other grade makeups?
You mean number of classrooms?
Yep.
No.
Okay. Someone has a question.
I just want to piggyback off of that. I know it was brought up at the town meeting about, um, there was a position that was open for, I don't know the name of it, PCBA? The behavioral, uh, Carolyn's position. Are we still looking to fill that?
Well, that was in the FY '24 budget. I know there's been discussions and I think that would be a discussion that administration would have with the school committee about looking at having what we used to call the learning support center to address some behavioral needs.
I, I actually asked that question at this, at the joint meeting and the principal did say that it was in the budget and that she, it wasn't filled because he couldn't find.
Because they couldn't find sort of personnel to fill it. So.
That was in the '24 budget?
Yeah.
So we can look at that to see if that was in the budget. I can't answer that right away.
I think that was a lot of community public too that we don't have very much that we can.
So we certainly can look at that and I know that's probably a need and it's been something expressed by both staff and community and the school committee.
Thank you.
Yep.
So I know the plan is to have one preschool class because there are 14 expected children. Is there a circumstance where there could be two classes because of me? Like, I know we expect 14, but say we end up getting 20 last minute. Would that warrant two classes or are we just going to roll with whatever enrollment we get and just still keep it one class? I feel strongly that there should be two preschool classes no matter what the number is because I just like look, it's needfully more like enrichment, enrichment from people. But just curious, what might.
So if there wasn't, and it wasn't in the budget, which it isn't currently, we would come to the school committee and the town to talk about that. Um, the hard thing with preschool is we don't always know the students and so we can't anticipate the needs the way we can with students who have been with us pre-uses. But that is a good question and that's always something we think about and we serve and come to the committee. And I know since I've been here, the town and the committee has been supportive of childhood education.
Is there a number cap? Yeah. Is there a policy anywhere?
Is there one?
Is there a policy anywhere for how many preschoolers in a room that we had for this school?
I don't believe we have a policy. Any EYC has a recommendation, one adult at 10 years.
We, we have a philosophy.
I didn't want to speak in advocate of National Association of the Education. Sorry, I don't usually speak in advocate. My apologies.
So it's more of like a philosophy that we, no, we're not going to pack 25 kids into a classroom, right? But there's no policy that says you hit this, now you're going to do something different.
I know it used to be based on like classroom size and per square feet, per child for napping purposes and stuff like that. So I know EEC does have and I know EEC is different, but like.
That's sort of in that middle ground of public preschool where we're governed by DSE.
All of certain things and other things.
Of course, you try to adhere to best practices.
Right.
As best we can.
Did anybody else have any other questions about?
Yeah, just.
Go for it.
Just curriculum stuff again. So if we are moving forward with our ELA curriculum, which sounds like we are and we're all set with that. I know there was talk of looking at math curriculums after ELA. Um, and wasn't sure if that is part of ASAP reviewing and process and purchasing similar to ELA that started at the beginning of the year and on the end of the year. They've made a decision and we're looking at purchasing. Is that the same process that is expected to happen with the math curriculum? And is that in the session?
So yes, it's going to be the same process because I think getting input from the staff who's using it is key as well as our curriculum coordinator who has background in curriculum development and work with curriculum. However, I'm not going to speak for the teachers, but I know implementing a new literacy curriculum is big and I wouldn't want to ask people to do math and reading back to back. And so I think we'll be starting the process and starting our thinking, but there are no plans to go new math, new reading curriculum, new math curriculum back.
So maybe not necessarily purchasing new math literature, but at least looking at what options might be available.
Right. Looking at options, perhaps there's materials. I know we've piloted things before and I think this summer, Lizzie will be talking with principals and other leadership around curriculum because it is occurring in other schools as well.
How old is the investigations program that we have?
Almost 10. Nine years.
What are the current ages?
Investigations.
I think it's high old.
Yeah.
Time.
Okay, that's helpful. Yeah, I think, oh, and then the other thing was when we talked about having to cut the budget, there was a lot of talk about having to cut, that would also impact like summer school, summer enrichment, any summer offerings. And so now that the budget is back to what it was, um.
Yeah, we have 30,000 in the line for summer programming. Our last year, I think we spent 20, 28 change. So it's sort of the same cost in the lines. And Karina, our director of student support services, has planned to organize summer services. That's relative to individualized education plans and students who receive special educational services. And, um, we are working and planning summer enrichment, which is outside of what Director Wisslow does around summer programming. Um, and I met with staff yesterday, spoke with staff yesterday and today. And so that's in the, in the works.
Anybody else? Okay, move on. Then the other one is. I asked to have the, uh, policy. Yep. Yep. Policy DGA brought back to us. Um, this is the policy about the authorized signatures on the warrant. Currently it says, um, uh, this is a little bit different actually.
So the one we have currently from, we approved in 2021 was based on an MAS C template from 2016. Of course, after we adopted it, MAS C came up with another updated format in 2022, um, which is very different from our current policy. Um, and so what we could do is get feedback here if this would go to the policy committee. But we do have policy DGA that's a template from MAS C that says the committee will designate by row call. Vote a single member responsible for review and approval of all warrants as correct and approved. Record of disapproval will be made on the next review of committee agenda. Such designation does not limit the responsibility of each member. The municipal treasurer, who also serves as a school department treasurer, signs all checks drawn again. School department funds, no other signature is valid. That one is different from our current policy.
This is the one I thought you, that I requested be brought to us, the one that was currently in place, not, not.
We actually have one from our last May meeting and it does have an addition in the middle. It does say the town treasurer and the town accountant are to be notified of the official signatories upon authorization of school committee.
That's right, Jen. That's right. Ryan had given feedback on that. But that's been, um, I think it's on the agenda for our next, not committee meeting, our next full.
School committee yes?
Yes, not policy.
Yes, and I'd like to request that we do, that we make an amendment to the policy that it's no longer one signer, it's two. Um, I think that that's a lot to put on one person. And, um, I, I really feel strongly that we should have two people signing off on those warrants. It's not down to one person. So I'd like.
And that comes to our next full committee meeting. I think we would amend the policy before the final vote and we could do that.
I'd like to do it all one and done. I'd like to do it all in that same meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's what I meant, but.
Yeah, because I think it's already on the.
Yes, I believe it is for the next June meeting.
All of the policies are.
Right. They've been on there for two months and I think time got away from us. Yeah, so I, I know they're on for the June.
So, so that is the, um, that's the one I'd like to make to that policy.
I just made a note for two members, but if you could, we'll officially make that motion at the next meeting.
Okay. Just for clarity, are you saying two members have to sign each one? Or there are two members that could sign and you need one signature?
Nope, two members.
To have to have sign. Thank you. Yep. Okay. Um, anything else about that? Never. So that's all that's on our agenda. Um, I know you wanted to go back to public hearing, but right before that. Um, our next meeting is scheduled for June 20th. I wanted to know if the committee would be open to a change in date on that?
Yes.
To the following Tuesday, the 22nd?
I will be here.
I will be here. Um, all right. I, I won't, I mean, other dates, I just thought it would be convenient to just drop a week. But, um, June 20th, I know doesn't really work for me and it doesn't sound like it works for Eric as well. So, um, I'm asking that we modify that.
Is there a different date that week? I at least, okay, I don't have a little something, but I'm, only though.
And are you on the 22nd?
Thursday would be ideal. Thursdays tend to be easier for me.
Thursday, the 22nd?
Yeah. I know you call. Sorry.
I'll, I'll guess so. I missed it. I missed it.
It's too hot out there. Too hot tonight. Um, I can make the 22nd work if, Jen?
I feel like I have something, but unless you think I, I don't have anything on my calendar, so you guys take precedence.
Do you guys have any other meetings?
Um, I do, but I think you're right. There's something with, I'll have to look at the 22nd. Jen, did you say a different time? Is that what you were thinking?
No, I just, no, I don't think of what, to a different time, I find it impossible.
Okay.
Can we do noon?
It looks like the 22nd.
If you're in class with me, it's in the chair. Sure.
Does that work, Jen? I'm sorry.
Yeah, it looks like the 22nd is clear. Caitlin, how's it going with you?
I think so.
And keep seven?
Um, do you want to go earlier or no? I mean, I'd like to go a little bit earlier. I'd like to go more like six. Is that, is that doable for people? Is that hard? Eric, is that hard for you?
No, it's, it actually works better for me.
Okay. So I, I'd like to make a motion that we move our next school committee meeting to June 22nd, which is a Thursday at 6:00 PM.
Do you need a second?
One second.
I'll be here.
Aight. I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Oh, no.
Oh, 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 sorry.
There was a question. We go back to politics.
Okay. Am I not good?
Yep, yep.
Sorry about that. So I have a stream of.
So I have a stream of questions, not related to the budget, related to aggressive behaviors. My son was punched in the face today at school and it's upsetting. And so I kind of understand school's policy around that. So the first question is, does the school track aggressive acts like this where one student punches and kicks a notion?
Yes, we have incident reports.
Okay, cool. What are the protocols for incidents like this?
It's dependent on the student, but typically the student is seen by an administrator. There are consequences and it's documented.
Do you have a gauge for consequences? Like, you know, one kid punches one kid and he loses recess? Or there's no gauge at all for if a kid hits someone versus making a physical threat versus making a verbal threat? There's no difference, it's all treated the same? Is it written anywhere for what the consequences might be?
No.
Are any of the students aware of those consequences for these type of aggressions?
Students are aware of those consequences for behavior.
How are they made aware?
Through dialogue with staff and through conversations with the principal.
Okay, how do you communicate these incidents with teachers?
Uh, through conversation.
There's no memo sent out? It's just if they miss morning meeting, they're not going to find out type deal?
So the teacher of the student who's committed the aggressive behavior.
Throughout the school, how are other teachers made aware of this?
So the teachers who need to know, that information is shared based on confidentiality, but it's not shared with an entire staff.
So then how are other teachers aware? Or is it the same teachers who monitor recess, for example, day in, day out? Or if you have a different teacher come in suddenly, they're not going to have the background that Johnny picked on Billy two weeks ago?
We would share on a need to know basis out of respect for confidentiality for all our students.
So how would you say the school maintains a safe environment for these types of acts?
We have restorative practices. We have logical consequences for students. We have caregiver communication when there are incidences. We have behavior tracking systems. We have counseling services available through our school adjustment counselor.
And do you feel it's adequate enough?
I think we can always improve and we're looking at things like positive behavior intervention support or PBIS and other ways to make sure that there's a shared vocabulary and a shared knowledge around behaviors that are expected.
Is there a legal or a limit of how many teachers you need to have during recess to monitor kids or other, other non-acute events?
No.
So it could be one, it could be five, just whatever we are able to do?
Of course, safety is always utmost in our mind, but there is no requirement from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education or Mass General Law relative to recess coverage.
Does Irving have a goal that they'll always have to teach you monitoring? Or is it just whatever you get?
So I can speak to, there's assigned coverage from staff members whose contract allows for doing coverage of recess, lunch, dismissal and arrival. And there's a schedule of that.
From my standpoint, it's apparent that there's a lot of behaviors still going on and that what we have been doing may not be working enough. And I don't know what support the teachers need, but it seems like they may be struggling with a lot of behaviors. And the example of my son getting punched in the face today unprovoked, I think is a, is an example. So I don't know what teachers need, but I mean, my son took a hit today. I am not happy about it. I want to know what the policy is. I think there should be a written policy. You can have a scale, I don't care, but I want to be able to know what my rights are as a parent and I want to know what consequences there are for other parents.
Was this during the non-structured time? Is that what you're getting at? Like, was there five teachers on recess duty? Is that, oh wait, I think, I think Devon's kind of asking, do you have a policy?
Yeah, and I would feel super comfortable having conversations with parents. I, I think we need to be careful about having conversations in a public forum.
We're not getting into details, but that's about generalities, about policy.
We don't have a policy, I believe I said that at the start.
You did, that's why I said I think we should have a policy.
We might have a procedure and all the procedures are listed in the handbook. But there are no policies from the Mass Association of School Committee who sends out policies relative to student behavior, except around suspensions.
Yeah, we have a student discipline policy.
Yes, but not, not if you hit once, if you hit twice, if you do this.
Yeah, I think it's always, teachers need more support in these kind of things.
I'm not going to go into a whole lot of what I really want to say, but in regards to what he's saying, I, I, he's talking about communication and I think that there is a huge communication problem with staff administration talking to our teachers and our teachers getting the support that they need. And I, I'm sick of hearing rumors and rumors from teachers and rumors from other parents. Like, there needs to be some, even if you're not saying names or blanking things out, there needs to be some way for people to be informed of what is going on.
The people who are.
I work in safety, so I totally get the whole thing. But if there was something going on where I worked, I would put out a blanket statement of what is going on. And to have, because that's where rumors start. An incident happened and nothing is shared with the teachers? Like, if you're looking for some kind of communication.
That's not true. The teachers that needed to know were involved, as were the parents. Information was shared. It's not information that's shared in a public forum. It can't be legally.
But you're not. There's other teachers that, there's other teachers that might interact with that student that weren't informed and don't know to keep an eye out that this kid's dysregulated today. But I think that's what we're saying is.
I can't speak to that.
We're not talking about individuals. We're talking about communication from other staff. Like, you're saying only the individuals that might come across this student were informed. Like, you might have somebody else on lunch.
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying the staff that needs to know. So that would be someone who covers a lunch duty or recess duty. That's what I mean by need to know. But if it's a teacher that's not going to encounter that student ever, except maybe passing the office, I cannot share information.
I can talk to that a little bit from a staff perspective, maybe how about, so for instance.
Thank you, Mark.
I know nothing about it and I shouldn't because I wouldn't deal with that kid. Say, for instance, something happened with one of my students in the morning. Outside, I didn't know about it. I would certainly be informed, administration would know. If that student goes to a special class, art class, certainly be our teachers informed. When it comes to lunchtime, there's a couple of different staff members working in lunch. They are informed, recess folks are informed, but not the broad extent of the school. We probably wouldn't do much else besides communicating issues that happen.
Could you just, or would you help me understand? You said you couldn't answer some of the questions, because of confidentiality. Except, is the parent of the child who has the ability to have that conversation in public, if he so chooses, at least asking that question?
Can I be more than happy to have that conversation in private? I'm not having it in a public.
Excuse me, let me finish this. So what I asked you is, would you explain why you cannot have that conversation in public? If the parent who's the legal guardian is asking that question in a public forum?
Because I can't speak to it to people who aren't involved.
If the parent isn't asking you to, well, I can't do it. That's what I'm asking you to explain, not, not for the.
Confidentiality, confidentiality.
Is that not his way?
The other parent may, I would assume, would not want it to be talked about. I think that's probably.
And I, I've finished answering on that topic. I'm more than happy to talk to the parent.
The other party hall, so that was trying to say why a parent isn't able to have a conversation in public that he wishes to. There's no. So you just refuse to answer questions?
I will talk to the parents.
That's not my answer.
I'm not answering that question in a public forum.
Can you explain to me why?
I just did confidentiality.
And I'm not saying either is, I'm going to speak for that.
I'm not going to be badgered in a public meeting. Jen, hang on, Jen.
No, I'm not.
Can you clarify why?
Well, just listen to this question and then I'll see if we can work it through. So that we can understand. But saying the same word over and over again doesn't add anything to the conversation. Jennifer, we're still having a meeting here. I'm busy.
Doesn't she work for Irving?
Dear God. Jake, if I'm going to answer what I would have hoped that Jennifer would have answered in that while you have a right to talk about your child in public, we don't have the right to talk about your child in public. And we certainly don't have a right to talk about another child in public. So I can't stop you from talking about your child, but I and, and Jennifer Colgan and any other staff member in the school district can't talk about your children in a public session. So that's, that's how the one, how, that's how it becomes a one-way conversation.
And sure, I didn't know who the other, who the other child is. That's why I was trying to ask questions in a very general sense.
Yep.
Not specific to today. I mentioned, yeah, he got punched in the face because that's why I'm here. That's why I'm heated.
Yep.
But beyond that, I'm just talking about general policy because I think there should be more transparent parent policies about what happens.
Yeah, no, I hear, I hear your questions and I, and they, they were good questions. They were, they were thoughtful questions.
She can't tell you what's going to happen to their kid because I'm sure there's some kind of general progression to the first, second, third, whatever. But I just want to know, is there a consequence? But that consequence might open like, because I'm not going to go find out.
And I would say to you that what a great place to bring up some of those questions also is the school council. And we have a school council here and that's another group that gets together that some of those discussions could be brought up and then could be brought to the school committee as suggestions for the, what were we just looking at, Jen? The student handbook. Sorry, those words just went right out of my head.
Change policy.
Where that policy is written. May not have all of your answers, but it is. And then that could be a place where if you felt like it needed to be beefed up, suggestions could be made.
To the school council?
School council, and then they bring it, they would bring it to us, to the school committee.
Why does the school council meet?
That I don't know. I, I don't know the specifics of the school council.
Do you have to know who's in the school council?
It's a small group. It's in the newsletter every year to, there are also new members. And there's always a table out there saying like, we need parents and no one really participates. So the last I knew, there were two or three parents on it, maybe?
The last time I even knew it was even going on was when Katie McLaughlin and I were on it. Other than that, I don't think anybody signed.
It's Beth Flaherty and myself.
Okay.
At least there's one or three.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I don't know who went first.
I just have one question, uh, based on this. Devon, probably she laughed because she didn't want me to speak, so that's okay. I'm not going to go there today. I just have one question. I've been told by the Department of Education that you all are in charge of deciding who, and this is different from what you guys say, is that you guys are in charge, you are the bosses. You hire her, you hire the principal, you hire the teachers.
Nope.
And every time, I've talked to the Federation of Special Needs, the Department of Education, and they all say that you hire those people. And so I'm confused and, and we differ from than every other town in Massachusetts. I'm like so confused by this. And so I don't know, maybe you guys can clear that up, but it's very confusing. And what, I literally talked to them just last week and they said the same thing that they have said to me previously. So they're like, you have to go to your school committee. Your school committee says that. But when I go to you guys, you say you're not. So I'm like, where, who do we go to as parents?
We're somewhat unique because we're part of a union. So there are, there are four towns, there are four schools that belong to the Union 28.
Five towns.
So there's five towns, sorry, and four schools. Four schools, yeah. New Salem, Wendell, which is Swift River, elaborate shoots very, and Irving.
Somebody's a school committee is just not the school committee. It's a joint supervisory committee, which is made up by members of all five schools.
So there's 25 members that hire and evaluate the superintendent. So there are 25 of us that oversee her job.
So those are the meetings we should be going to?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yep, yep. And she hires the principal, that our superintendent hires each principal.
And the principal and the superintendent, ultimately the superintendent hires the staff. We do not have any say in those hiring staff.
So it's because we're a union, because we're in a union, that that is different?
Yep.
And maybe that's the question which we're asking. Thank you.
And so like, I think it was brought up last meeting where if we wanted to make any changes about the superintendent, it would have to be a two-thirds vote as a union. So all of those 25 people.
I'm not just talking about just the superintendent.
No, 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 but, but then, no, no, no. But that would be our, like, our preview of what we would have control over. And purview, sorry. And then the superintendent is the one that is in charge of the principal and then the principal is in charge of the staff. Like, so it kind of goes down that way.
So you guys really have no say in those people?
We have one quarter of the say.
And the superintendent.
Oh, the superintendent.
Just the superintendent.
Just the superintendent, gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yep. So when people talk about leaving the union, that's some of the reason why that comes up is because our hands are a bit tied.
I'm a hundred percent in support of that.
I'm just, that, that is the reality. That, that is part of that conversation, is the, the understanding that we are one quarter of that.
Thank you.
So I guess this goes along with it and transparency and communication. Clearly, there's rumor, my kids are coming home telling me the principal's not in school. We've got no communication from anybody, whether it be the superintendent, the school committee, it's all rumor out in public. We don't need to know details, but I guess as a concerned parent of an incident, now that I'm learning, has happened at school, who, who tells us? Hey, in the interim of this absence, you would need to contact Jen. Or who's, who's filling in for her position? How long is this going to be? We don't care about details, we need to know who to go to. It's like as if your boss was out. You don't just get lurked in the dark and come in and one day they're not there. I just feel like there's no, we're always talking about transparency, but yet we're still in the dark.
Well, I apologize, there was no communication up to all of you.
That's what I was talking about earlier, like, where's a blanket statement like, hey, this is who I call, or even for the staff? Because that's where rumors start, is now everybody's talking about why this person is here or what's going on here. And now everybody's talking about it and you're hearing all these rumors from all these super parents and it, it just doesn't make sense. Why, that would stop rumors by communicating.
We were told that the superintendent, along with the curriculum director, is also, is taking over while the principal is on, is on leave.
Yep. So you, any questions or concerns would be sent to the superintendent?
For the rest of the year.
Until for now. Is there anybody else?
Yeah. Should we, I wish I had gone earlier. I was going to thank everybody that it was so significantly better than the last time. But it got, we just went from one person to the next. But I will try to go back about 15 minutes. It was a significantly more professional, better toned meeting where you could actually communicate and hear ideas. And, you know, it was nice to hear that Caitlin had mentioned that she does give me these expenditure reports every month and has always done that. So I didn't know that, so that's something I, that's great. I was going to say, I think the school committee has improved and taken the job, I don't want to say more seriously, but in going from every two months of meeting to every month, like, I think you're realizing it's a significant job to keep up on things. And I appreciate that you are doing that. I appreciate that Caitlin was able to find these other areas and it was just much better.
I agree.
For most of it. And then I don't think, Devon, you were actually asking for that specific situation to hear, or were you? Were you asking her to share what the discipline was? I don't think so. And then, and then it got significantly amped up and didn't need to. And that's disappointing because these people are feeling attacked all the time. And I get last time, we felt like we had anywhere from 150,000 to 300,000. You were frustrated. I get it. We communicated, we worked it out, we, we shared these thoughts. She, Jen Colkin was trying to say, I'm not going to talk about that in public. You did not want it to be talked about in public. You're talking about generalizations, and it just blew this up. And it doesn't need to happen anymore. But overall, I thank you for a significantly better meeting today.
Thank you, Mark.
Mackenzie, I'd just like to thank you for finding a way to articulate what superintendent couldn't get past, whether it's an inability to articulate in the moment or deficiency in emotional intelligence in the moment. But thank you for providing more of these simple syllables over and over again and explaining exactly what that single word meant in this context.
Thank you.
I'd love to say something thorough, but as a female, I was sitting up there as a female, and I had a male sitting there grading me, I would have done the same thing, because you don't know what's in my house and whatever trauma I had. So, I think I would have loved to say, like, it's pretty rough. Like, I'm not saying I agree or I'm on anybody's side, but I'm on the side of treating. Just in a way that we, like, expect our children to treat each other. Like, I'm a teacher sitting here, and it's like, it's a policy issue.
All we can do is move forward, right? I think that's, and, and I, and I did forget, just really quickly, I did want to address, I had received several emails requesting that there be at least a conversation about different ways that we can have this meeting be interactive, possibly having a, a call-in feature or a online, like a, you know, Zoom or Google Meet feature. I did reach out to a couple of people to figure out the logistics of that. At this moment, I can't logistically make it happen. We're, we're on camera, and we don't have the staff. There's a question about, you know, you have to store everything for public record. So, right at the moment, we don't quite have all the pieces in, in place to do that. But I have heard that that is, you know, certainly a request that people are making that have, figure out some way to make the meetings more interactive. So, I'll continue to work on that. One, I wanted to just say, yes, I, I heard you, and thank you for your emails. And two, at this moment, we just, we don't have all the pieces in place to make that happen. But it doesn't mean we won't going forward as all of our technologies get better and we figure out how to mesh them better. But just right, right currently, we don't. So, I'll keep working on it. But unfortunately, you know, in person or watching it on YouTube afterwards is, is what we have at the moment. Anything else? Oh, yep.
So, as you're contemplating now, you know, communicational question about the principal and who we're going to, if you could consider letting the town administration know as well, if they were not aware of it.
Say it one more time.
The principal being out.
Yep.
And who was operating, was a information I don't think the town administration had either. So, if you, if you consider how maybe better communicate that, if you could put that in the conversation.
Yep. All right, that was, that was not quite a public hearing, but it was a nice chance to just kind of chat and work some things through, so that was nice. Do we all feel good?
Nope.
All right.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
And please remember, we changed the date of the next meeting.